Welcome, everybody. I think we're gonna start off this council meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. And maybe we can talk our city attorney into leading it. All right, at this meeting to order. Individuals wishing to address the City Council are requested to complete a speaker convert to the city clerk staff prior to the item being heard. Please observe a three-minute limit for communications and once called upon to speak, please state your name and city to size for the record. There's no proclamations tonight. Meeting minutes.
So moved.
It's been moved. Anybody want a second?
A second.
Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker cards on the minutes?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for the meeting minutes.
All right, now we have a motion in a second. Can we? In the spirit of Didario, thanks for using the buttons.
Okay. Councilmember Didario, your vote.
See, still.
Uh, we, uh, look here, Didario, we use these buttons around.
That's what he says.
I.
Thank you.
I take back my compliment. Okay, consent calendar, all items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine matters. Status reports or documents covering previous city council action. The item listed on the consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. With the concurrence of the city council, a council member or any person in attendance may request that an item be removed for further consideration. Would any of my esteemed colleagues like to poll any items for discussion? Really? I'm number six. And nobody else? Any, uh, Master Sergeant Sylvia, any?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for the consent calendar.
All right.
So moved.
Did you push the buttons?
Did.
Okay, number six is, um, I guess I should have forgotten it. Mr. Ellis, can we get, can I just ask questions? I don't need the full report.
Sure, if you've got some questions staffer here and prepared to answer those, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, is it Justin?
I think Donna Finch and Justin might end up tag teaming this, and it looks like we've got Moses here as well. So you've got the A-team here to answer any questions that you've got.
Moses is BA Baracus. Is there gonna be new carpet? And is it gonna get new light fixtures?
So there are some light fixtures have been replaced where the soffit's being removed um, to match the existing ceiling because there's a false soffit there. And, and there is carpet. So we gave them the model, we included the model number and the type of carpet where the walls will be removed so that it's matching to existing.
Can we get new carpet?
If the council wants to add in money for new carpet, we can do whatever you want us to do. Um, I think the idea is that because we have matching carpet out there, they could replace some of it, but it's, that's a priority for council. Just let us know what, what you'd like.
You're using attic stock?
So they're glued down, uh, carpet squares.
It's carpet tiles? Okay, I'm cool with that. Um, go ahead, Wes.
I did have one, one question. I saw that the security's not called out. Is that a separate contract?
So the card swipes will be handled internally, um, since it's outside of the scope work for them. So we'll, we'll include card swipes on the elevator and the doors.
Uh, cameras?
Cameras are.
So we have a separate grant through IT for, um, well, we're working with IT to install cameras through a broadband grant. So that is a, a separate project that's gonna occur concurrently. So we will have cameras installed in the space as well.
Yeah, it's very, very important because we, you know, it's a double-edged sword, right? We want the Heritage Room to be open to, to folks to be able to come in and visit and do research and, and, you know, touch and experience Corona history. Um, but at the same time, we want them to leave Corona history in the history room and the Heritage Room. So, uh, great, look forward to here. I know I didn't see it in there. I just wanted to, I assumed it would be a separate contract, but that makes sense. Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Wesley. I'm, I'm cool. I didn't know you had carpet tiles in stock, so that works really well. But I would like to encourage changing out the light fixtures. They're parabolic light fixtures right now. If you change them to LED fixtures, the money will pay for itself. So I would like to go down that route if it's possible.
That is the will of council. Just give us that direction. Uh, it sounds like there's a question over here.
No, what, what you're asking is for us to change out the lighting, and I just want to know what's included with doing that. What's the cost with doing that before we just say yes?
It's $350 a light fixture with labor, material and install, probably 400.
Is that like private sector pricing or?
No, that's government pricing. It would be half that if it was my company doing it. Thirty light fixtures, fifty light fixtures?
I don't know, top, top my head, but it's gonna be around probably forty to fifty closer to.
Yeah, and then you gotta add controls. I'll be, so it's it pays off is you're no longer replacing bulbs or ballasts and the LED light fixtures are sixty times more efficient than parabolic light fixtures. So you save it in the cost of your electric bill.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that, but I, um, if we're making a kind of a change, I'd like to consider it.
Financially?
Mm-hmm.
So can I make a motion where we consider changing the light fixtures?
You can always make a motion to whatever you'd like to make that as.
Okay.
Fused with like the type of lighting when you have older materials, like it has to, if you have, it have older materials, sometimes if the light shines on it, if it's the wrong light, it could damage the material?
Well, those are the lights they have now that damage the material. The LED would be way more sensitive to the, to the photographs than the fluorescent, compact fluorescent.
Could we just, could we bring back like the actual numbers though and not just guessing from the bias? I mean, I'm sure Tom's close, but, uh, I'd like to, to have it official.
Yes, please.
So if I'm hearing you right, you'd like us to look into the cost of replacing the lights with LEDs and bring that cost back for council consideration that perhaps the next meeting, if we have it available by that time?
Yep.
That would be it, some nods there. Okay.
And, um, pushing this item then in its entirety to the next meeting won't, um, you know, is there any time sensitivity to consider here? Is it going to?
I'm seeing, I'm seeing that there is not, sounds like.
Contract is aware, so we just, um, we'll just push the agreement out. Um, he hasn't been given his notice to proceed yet, uh, just awaiting council's approval. So we're good.
Okay.
Are you through plan?
That's it. We got all the plans approved.
I was just thinking, could, if we approve this as is minus the fixtures and that would come back as a separate item?
Can we do that, Jacob? Because changing out the lighting wouldn't change out the scope of the job.
I just hate to delay.
Yes. So if, if the council approves the contract tonight, we could move forward with the current scope and then bring back a potential amendment to the contract with the revised cost. And then if the council approved that updated cost, then we could do a change order to the contract.
Can we do Donna's motion?
Well, and, and we could also, uh, if you could include what would be the pick until we actually recovered the extra money?
Yes, please.
Three years.
We can do that analysis. So what I'm hearing is you're going to approve the contract tonight.
Yes.
But with the caveat that we bring back, uh, this item for, to take a look at the lighting as well, some analysis and what the cost would be as well as the ROI and changing that out.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's your motion, Tom?
That's my mo, that's mine and Donna's motion.
I'll second.
Your motion.
Um, are there any, uh, Sylvia? All right, does anybody want to speak about this?
Mayor, I do not have any speaker cards for this item.
All right. Um, is there a second for mine and Donna's motion?
Was.
There was, yeah.
Okay. Can we vote?
Sorry, I didn't get who made the second motion. Wes, okay, thank you.
Pushed the button. It has my name on it.
All right, we passed. Let me, um, hook. This portion of the agenda is intended for general public comment on items within the council's jurisdiction that are not listed elsewhere on the agenda. Not that that would stop anyone. The state law, the city council from discussing or taking action on these items, not that that would stop anyone. We're not observing that. Please observe a three-minute limit for comments and once called upon to speak, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Ms. Edwards, are there any comments?
Mayor, yes, I have one speaker card for communication from the public.
Is it Joe?
It is not.
Oh, okay. Come on down.
Good evening, uh, council members and Mayor Richens. Uh, my name is Jose Marquez Coas. I am a resident of Corona and District Three. Um, I'm here today just to kind of, um, just really strongly implore the, um, city council to really consider a resolution, um, promoting a ceasefire in what's happening in Gaza. Um, many of our taxpayers are actually supporting, you know, what's going on in there. And I think, um, we need to just be more financially invested within our communities, within our, um, I think, um, in the US. And so, um, I have some facts that I just want to put, put out there and I just don't want to be, I know this is a nonpartisan, um, kind of space and I'm not trying to put politics involved, um, but I just want to state the facts that's happening right now. Um, today we just seen there's a demonstration again at the State Assembly, um, really just trying to implore again a ceasefire. Um, and Biden has already passed Congress to approve 147.5 million dollars in military equipment cells to Israel, um, meaning that more debts are gonna occur if this continues to happen as it's happening right now. Um, and that's on dollars that's already been provided to Israel, um, to kind of already, um, cause such catastrophe at very disproportionate levels. Um, over sixty percent of US voters, according to a very various, um, yeah, polls, um, across the country, um, people across the country, um, including on both sides of the aisle, um, Republican, Democrat, um, support a permanent ceasefire in, in the Gaza war-inflicted region. Um, and eighty percent of the Gaza ship has already been kind of already displaced with sixty percent of buildings destroyed. Can you imagine that being, you know, churches, hospitals, um, homes, uh, families, um, refugee camps and more that provide essential aid? And as someone who, um, works in public health, I see this as a public health crisis as well, where even the UN has already stopped, um, providing, um, some funding to Israel or humanitarian aid, I should say, um, regarding food and, um, basic needs. And so for, to me, I think the most concerning part is that there's a lot of children, over fifty percent of the region are children, um, and they're just kind of being very, um, stricken from these, um, basic needs essentials. Um, and so again, I just really implore you all to really consider a ceasefire resolution. I think if we've seen in the past, um, we're just continuing history. Um, Afghanistan and Iraq has already, the wars in Afghanistan and Iraq has already implored the US to spend billions and billions of dollars, um, where a poll, um, has already estimated that one to 3.5 trillion dollars was involved in both Iraq and Afghanistan. And I think this is gonna continue to happen unless we actually raise our voices and really urge our leaders across the country, um, to really take this, um, situation seriously and, um, um, implore a ceasefire. So thank you all for your time.
Thank you for coming down. Thank you for speaking. Okay, Mrs. Edwards, is there anybody else?
Mayor, we do not have any more speaker cards.
All right. Moving on to administrative reports, number twelve, advanced our care, planning commissioners Karen Alexander and Marie Vernon to attend the League of California Cities, two, for Planning Commissioners Academy in Long Beach, California. Uh, says Joanne Coletta, Planning and Development Director will present this item. And we'll go from.
I think that's typo.
Oh.
We, we can take any speaker cards and you can move on the item if you'd like.
All right, you're off the hook, Joanne. Um, does Mrs. Edwards, twenty-year veteran? Is, are there of Corona? Are there, uh, any speaker cards?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for this item.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I can just comment that, um, I, um, wanna thank our, both of our commissioners for taking time out of their days to go and do this training. Um, and, uh, for the city to open up this opportunity to commissioners, because it was previously primarily only for the council members. And so I'm glad that our commissioners now have the opportunity and they're taking us up on it and they're doing it. And so, um, I hope you have fun. I hope you learn a lot and enjoy and network with other planning commissioners from other cities so that we can bring home some best practices. So, thank you.
Anybody else? Tony Bale? Okay, Jim? I had anonymous citizen worried about his not getting dinner if his wife goes to this meeting, but other than that, I, I see no reason. Uh, we have a motion. Is there a second? All right, can we vote? Sylvia? Passes four to zero. And we're in good shape. Legislative matters, boards and commissions. Oh, there's none of that. Library Board of Trustees, there's none of that. Um, Planning and Housing Commission. We do have something. Planning and Housing Parcel Map 38694 to subdivide 1.4 acres into two parcels for single-family residential lots for right-of-way purposes located at the southeast corner of Upper Drive and Wester Avenue in the A dash fourteen point four, single-family residential minimum lot size of fourteen thousand four hundred forty square feet. Zone applicant Sahid Barid Said. Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker?
Do not have any speaker cards.
Thank you. Um, says, do we have? Do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
All right, did you guys want to say anything? Or just go straight to motioning?
I, I will, I will just say that, uh, I watched the planning commission and they asked, they asked all the questions, so I didn't have anything. It was good.
Jim, you got anything? You're cool.
Sir, I already said.
Uh, can we vote on this, Sylvia? Okay, five, oh, welcome back, Tony. We have, uh, number fourteen, regional meeting report update from Council Member Wes Speek on the Board of Directors of the Western Riverside County Regional Wastewater Authority, or WACRA, meeting December eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. Good luck.
Rickra.
Rickra.
I guess, you gotta, it rolls right off the tongue. Um, uh, let's see, meeting was on the eleventh. Uh, I, I, uh, let's see, we talked about, uh, giving some temporary space to Hoopa Community Services District, our, our partner there at that Rickra, and that was approved. We did, um, I did, there were some really good numbers that came out are actually really kind of amazing numbers. Um, the site treats, uh, treated over, uh, two hundred eighty-three million gallons, uh, a month. Of that, thirty-three point six million gallons was Coronas. Um, and it's, it really shows, it's a collection of, of Hoopa Valley, Norco, um, Home Garden Sanitation District and Western Waste, um, our Western Water. They're, uh, all three are all these groups all get together and basically operate this facility together and it saves everybody money. Um, we heard a presentation on our odor mitigation project, which strangely enough, we had a couple of uh, ink upticks in September for odor complaints, but I think it, it'll be tamped down as soon as this mitigation project is complete. Um, the, uh, there's some vapor controls projects that'll be completed in February. They're just waiting on, uh, some acquisition of some pieces and parts. Uh, digestion project is ninety percent complete. Um, we approved a contract for, uh, construction of, uh, South Region Pump Station Bypass Project and the non-potable water improvement projects are AKA the Temescal Siphon Improvements. Pretty exciting stuff there. Um, and then we talked a little bit about our recycle water program, but I, before I, I end, I just wanted to say what an interesting, you know, organization this is because it is a group of cities and, and the cities areas that got together to, to do this. And frankly, I think it was, uh, I, I want to give credit where credit's due and, and Mr. Moody, I think, was very much involved in making sure that we were a part of this group. And it's literally saved the, the city millions and millions of dollars. So, um, a really great program and a really great group of folks that, that we get together once a quarter and, or actually once a month, it seems like, it seems like once a quarter, but it's only once a month. Um, uh, but it is a, a great group of folks and, and, uh, everybody's kind of pulling in the same direction. So it's really good.
All right, thank you, Wesley, and shout out to Mr. Moody. Um, you're up next for, uh, RCTC meeting of December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Okay, uh, we awarded eighty-six million dollar, uh, contract, uh, to a study and design for, um, the fifteen, uh, extension project. That's the, the toll lanes that'll start at Calco or continue from Calco to the seventy-four. Um, we allocated another almost five hundred thousand dollars, uh, to the San and River Trail to finish that piece that goes around, uh, Prado Dam. Uh, the most interesting part of the presentation was it's, it's probably the most congested, um, jurisdiction-wise project there is. Uh, just this one little section, a little over a mile long, has fourteen jurisdictions and three counties. So, um, staff did a great job kind of navigating that and, and getting it through. Um, there were, uh, under SB one twenty-five, there were some formula changes on, on how money gets distributed. Um, the biggest portion of it before it, the entire amount, a hundred, two hundred and eighty-seven million dollars would go to RCTC, um, for RCTC to decide which projects were funded. Now it's, uh, it's open statewide and we have to compete, uh, you know, compete through, we have to provide a recommendation. However, those projects need to compete on the national or at the state level. So it's gonna make it really, very hard. Um, let's see. That's under the SCAG part. Um, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Wesley. Uh, up next, the regional meeting report update from Vice Mayor Jim Steiner on the Riverside Transit Agency Board Meeting of December fourteenth.
Yes, sir. Well, it wasn't, uh, not a whole lot going on. Uh, we, our T now chapters were dark during the month of December, but we did have a, a get-together for lunch in, uh, UCR with, uh, all the chapters and just to kind of, uh, talk about the accomplishments and different things going on in different, uh, local areas of, uh, RTA. Uh, RTA welcomes newly-elected twenty twenty-four Chair Jeremy Smith of Canyon Lake and Vice Chair Steve Hemingway of, Hemingway of Riverside, and I have the honor of representing Corona and serving as the second vice chair. The meeting dates for twenty twenty-four were approved by the board. All the meetings are set for the fourth Thursday of each month, with the exception of January, November, December, due to the other, uh, other meetings and the holiday season conflicts and the board will be dark in July. There was, um, uh, a human resources policy section, uh, dealing with sick leave for administrative employees, uh, that was updated to reflect the change in California law. And qualifying inland empire health plan members can receive a free bus pass in collaboration with IEHP and call the car. And that completes my update.
All right, thanks, Jim. Uh, the last and final is an update for me on the Riverside County Habitat Conservation Agency meeting of December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. I'm sure you'll all be surprised to find out that we talked about kangaroo rats. It's, um, it was fascinating. I learned, uh, I, I took some notes. Well, you should be. They, um, they brought in an expert. He's been working with kangaroo rats for thirty years. And he, he talked a lot about trapping them. And in order to aid in what's called pre-baiting. So I don't know if any of you guys have pre-baited before, but, uh, pre-baiting takes place in the dark. So you just kind of wander off. Kind of wander off into a remote area by yourself and then you put some seed down. That's why you're wandering. And then, um, once you put a seed all over the place. Hey, the expert said this. We had to listen to this guy. He, he had a lot to say about it. So once you put the seed there, then, uh, you wait for the rats to show up. And then, um, they eat the seed and they get trapped. And now there's an app for all the trapped rats where they measure them and figure out stuff with them. And so that, that was the big highlight of the meeting. And then one of the, the expert, the main expert, he said, there's a website that you can go to. It's called ninjarat.com. And if you ever get a chance, it's pretty good. So those kangaroo rats can really jump and they, there's all sorts of, they're like ninjas. So that was it, um, for the rat. And we adjourned the meeting and drove home in humor. So with um, Ms. Edwards, are there any speaker, the public for the regional updates?
Mayor, we do not have any speaker cards for regional updates.
And no one wants to know more about the rat?
Jackie might.
Didn't talk about, uh, peanut butter or anything?
He did talk about peanut butter. I was leaving that out. Some of your guys' minds wander in wrong directions. Um,
Love peanut butter.
Moving on. City attorneys re- All right, zero. Ellis, you got anything?
Mayor, I just wanted to wish everybody a happy new year. Um, and hope everybody had a great holiday and we are so excited for what is in store this year for Corona. We've got some really cool projects coming and, and I think twenty twenty-four is gonna be a fantastic year. So thank you.
All right, thanks, Jacob. Um, city council member reports. Oh, we're supposed to appoint, it says here appointments to regional boards and commissions. But I'm just assuming everybody wants to be on the same boards and commissions. Or did anybody want the rat?
I mean, I, I, I definitely want you to be, still be on the, the same commission, just because.
I don't know what I would do if you stopped reporting out on RCHC.
Okay, I will continue to cover pre-baiting. Um, so everybody's cool with where you're at? Wesley, your twelve committees?
Good.
Okay. All right, so and Sylvia, do we have to vote on that or is it just?
No, we don't. We, um, the clerk's office will notify all the commissions of the appointments made tonight.
Okay, everybody in the land is happy. Um, city, oh, here we go. Now on to city council member comments. Do any of my colleagues have any comments? Tony? Wes?
I got a couple. Um, one, I, I sat through a, a Cal City's street vending webinar and that was, was really wonderful to see our own court enforcement and compliance supervisor, Rachel Vodka, on the, on the webinar as well and heard from folks, um, all throughout the, the state that were telling their stories of woe and, uh, street vending and we have no problems. Um, so I'll just hearing, hearing some of the other issues that were going on. It was pretty interesting. Um, on the sixteenth, uh, Mayor Richens and I went to Post Two Sixteen for their hundredth anniversary. Uh, the National Commander of the American Legion was in attendance and pretty awe-inspiring, uh, to hear some of his speeches and, or his, uh, some of the actions he's doing, which is really, you know, going over in Southeast Asia and recovering, um, lost servicemen. It's pretty, pretty moving to hear. And then, uh, last but not least, uh, I think most of us were there, all of us were there for the Walk of Honor, um, for, for, sorry, five folks that retired. Um, Captain Dan Bloomfield, uh, Sergeant Kevin Sedolfo, uh, Sergeant Jody Perkins, uh, Senior Detective Dan Negan, Nigu, and, uh, our management analyst extraordinaire, Michelle Adams. It was great to be there and see everybody and, and celebrate the careers of at least the, the three folks that were able to make it. I know two that couldn't, but, uh, it was great to be there and great to see, uh, such a good crowd that sending them off. And it's a special ceremony, but thank you. That's it. Oh, last thing. Uh, adopt a dog. Our shelter is full. Um, you know, we had a lot of people that were, I, I did a post, a post on Facebook, kind of, you know, telling, telling people I know they didn't get unconditional love for Christmas, but you can definitely get that if you go to the shelter. And, and is the, I think one of the, the CPAs, are they still covering the adoption fees? I think somebody was covering adoption fees. So I thought it was, no, not yet. Are they expired? Okay. Um, yeah, go adopt a dog. Um, yeah, go adopt a dog. There's too many dogs. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Wesley. Jackie?
Um, I just want to echo the comments by our city manager. I'm looking forward to getting this year off to a great start. Our next meeting should be a really good one. Uh, we've got some really big, uh, capital projects coming on board, some big master plans coming on, coming on board. And so I'm looking forward to, to, um, starting twenty twenty-four with really big, like vision stuff for our city and for our community, right? Like really bringing forward um, the things that we've been talking about for years now. So I'm excited.
All right, Jackie leaving the cliffhanger to the next council meeting. Jim? You're good? Okay, I have a couple of comments. I'd like to publicly thank the Santiago Marching Band. They, this year marched in the Rose Parade. And, uh, they killed it. I, I didn't know there was so much to marching in a band, but apparently if you're in straight lines and sound good and everything, and our band did better than every other band. And so, uh, they'll probably be invited back, um, in five years. That's how often you can go, once every five years. And then last, uh, I didn't get your name, but you had the guts to come and speak to a city council and I find a lot of right, respect for that. And so thank you for coming. And with that, um, the next meeting of the council of, is January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. This meeting is adjourned.